A quorum and we have seven of sevens, so we are duly organized and ready to proceed. The next item is item C invocation by Supervisor Allen and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Bryant. Please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for each and every one that's here tonight. Pray you watch over us, lead guidance directors in each and everything we say and do. Help this board to work good with the county and help the people in the county and do the right things. Do it with no trouble. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is item D approval of the amended agenda. There was an addition to under N and we added N eight to that through our EMS. So is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? The motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers to approve the amended agenda. Any questions before we vote? Please vote aye, those opposed no on the electronic voting board. Is it?
Jamie.
Mr. Schuhler.
Jamie.
Clear it. All right, do we need to reset it? Or either go to the next one. But there you go. There you got it. All right, unanimous. Thank you.
Revote, Jordan.
Oh, yes. Everyone, please revote using your board. And that motion is unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Schumaker. Next item is item E approval of minutes. Is there a motion to that effect, board members?
So move.
A motion has been made by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Bryant to approve the minutes as presented. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your votes. Aye, those opposed, no. And that motion is unanimous. Thank you. Next item is item F approval of claims. There a motion to that effect to approve the claims?
So move.
Motion has been made by Supervisor Davis, seconded by Supervisor Bryant to approve the claims as presented. Any questions on that? All right, please record your votes. Aye, those opposed, no. That is unanimous, seven to zero. Item G first quarter appropriations, that is in your packet to approve those. A motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Allen to approve the claims. Any questions? If not, record your vote aye, those opposed, no. And that is unanimous. H announcement, any board member have an announcement or anything from staff? I think we're good there. All right, we are now time for public comments. Keep in mind that this is a time where you have three minutes as an individual per the sign up sheet and please discuss things other than the scheduled public hearings because we do have two hearings tonight under L, so let's go ahead and open that up.
Joyce Gooden, District Six.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Gooden.
Thank you for giving me the time. Good evening supervisors. My, I'm Joyce Gooden. I live on seventeen seventy-nine Shelton Store Road and Joe Chambers is my supervisor. And I'm proud of it, Joe. To that, tonight I'd like to speak to you on requesting that you add a handicap ramp directly in front of the doors at the Ag Building where the parking is, where we park in front. And my mother used to say, we have to be careful of the signs we hang on our buildings because sometimes we hang invisible signs on our buildings and that tells us also how we treat people. At a recent public meeting, I brought two of my community's wisdom seniors to the meeting. I brought Mr. Charles White and Ms. Marie Gillespie to the meeting. They're both former teachers. They're wisdom to our community and addition to our community. But both of them have health problems. And I stopped to let them out in front of the door. Well, they'll gone, Ms. Gillespie's on a walker and that edge is high. And so to have her walk down to the ramp in front of the health department would have been a disservice to her, but also Mr. White had bad back problems. And so to exclude any of this wisdom from a public meeting, I think would be really a disservice to the community. But considering I'm looking at people who are eighty and ninety plus years old. Well, it could have been somebody on crutches. It could have been somebody in a wheelchair or me limping with my bad knee. So, and to make any of us walk down the extra steps or go have to go around the back and say, you can only come if you go around the back is a sign that we really don't want to say, you're not welcome if you have any kind of mobility issues. So once again, I'm requesting that you add a handicap ramp so that when I let folks out or I need to get into the building at the Ag Building directly in front, I don't have to go way down in front of the health department in order to get into the meeting that's, you know, I bypassed the ramp. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gooden. Ms. Land?
Teresa McManus, District Two.
Welcome, Ms. McManus.
First, I'd like to say, I want to wish Mr. Bryant, I interview you, you're going, you're retiring. I hope you have a better retirement than me. You have been a great adversary and of great help when I've needed things. He's been a great neighbor.
Thank you.
So we will miss you when you're gone because who am I going to fight with? With you gone? Well, he's been great, you know? We've had our tits for tats and we've done well. And he will be missed because when I did need help, he was there. All right? So we know he's leaving, as sorry as we are. My question is, why aren't we going to have a special election? Why aren't we going to put out, like I saw in the Farmville Herald, which got cleaned out of my folder so I couldn't bring you the article, I think it was two weeks ago, they made the comment that they are putting up applications for people to run. I have no interest in his position, by the way, so don't worry about it. But why don't we do that? Why in Buckingham County do we not ask for people to, who want to be in that position, to run? I thought, by the way, just to let you know, I am now the Republican head of the Election Integrity Committee. So I will be attending all the election board meetings, which I have started. And I have my nice little code, which makes great bedtime reading, fall asleep like that. But we do have that option here and we should be exercising that. We should be saying to people, who wants to run for the Board of Supervisors? Because my question to them would be, why do you think you'd make a good Board of Supervisor? What are you going to do? Where do you stand? We have these rights to ask these questions. I don't think appointing people makes people happy.
Thank you, Ms. McManus.
That's all we have.
Ms. Land, is that, does that conclude?
Okay.
All right, so moving on to item J on our agenda, we do have two presentations. And our first one is J one, presentation of resolution of memoriam for Robert Earl Bryant. And if the Bryant family would join me at the podium, please, so I can present this. So on behalf of the board, thank you all for being here. And you have our condolences. So this is a resolution in memoriam for Robert Earl Bryant. Whereas Robert Earl Bryant departed this life on May eighth, two thousand twenty-two at the age of eighty-seven years old in Arvonia, Virginia. Whereas Robert Earl Bryant was born on January the fourth, nineteen thirty-five. Whereas Robert Earl Bryant was the son of the late Richard Lewis Senior and Verna Stinson Bryant and was preceded in death by his brothers Thomas William Bryant and Richard Lewis Bryant Junior and Sister Kathleen Bryant Jones. Whereas Mr. Bryant is survived by his lovely wife of sixty-six years, Annie Jones Bryant. Children, Robert Mark Bryant and Lois Bryant Frank, four grandchildren, Kyle Bryant Frank, George Connor Frank, Hannah Frank Fountain and Audrey Marie Frank. Great grandson, Robert Bryant Beau Fountain, brothers Joseph Carey Bryant and Kenneth Melvin Bryant and sister Audrey Bryant Maxie. Whereas Robert Earl Bryant was a graduate of the Marshall District High School in Buckingham County. Whereas Robert Earl Bryant started his railroad career at the age of eighteen with CNO Railway in Richmond, Virginia, where he worked his way up, working in many cities and states. Whereas Mr. Bryant had a successful career from which he retired after thirty-five years with CSX and moving back to Buckingham where he founded the Buckingham Branch Railroad in nineteen eighty-eight and was a founding member of Old Dominion Chapter of the National Railway Historical Society and the CNO Historical Society. And whereas Robert Earl Bryant loved railroading, he took Buckingham Branch from a tiny seventeen point three mile long railroad with two employees to its size today of two hundred and eighty miles of track with eighty employees, the largest short line railroad in the Commonwealth, where he was honored by the Virginia General Assembly for its exceptional service to the Commonwealth by restoring rail lines, improving transportation infrastructure with honesty, strength and character. Whereas Robert Earl Bryant was a dedicated Christian and member of Mount Zion Baptist Church where he served as deacon. Whereas Mr. Bryant was known for his integrity and responsibility. He loved music, singing with friends and playing piano and guitar, farming, gardening, making sorghum syrup, where he shared it with his family and friends. He also loved to invent things to make it easier and better, to make better ways of doing and fixing things. Whereas Mr. Bryant was a pillar to the community and was loved and respected by all who knew him and will be greatly missed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors in memoriam on this thirteenth day of June, two thousand twenty-two, pay its tribute and express to its highest esteem for Robert Earl Bryant and extends its deepest sympathy to his loved ones.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks very much. We are really surprised and delighted to receive you. Of Buckingham County.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item is J two, presentation of certificates honoring the Buckingham County Varsity Girls Basketball Team. So if you're here and if you're on the basketball team, please come forward so we can give you these certificates. So I'm going to read your name and if you would approach me and I will present you with your certificate. Probably a lot of folks won't be here, so, and if I mispronounce your name, please excuse me. Brianna, Brienne Slape. Congratulations. You're welcome. All right, Mary Sidney Heslip. Congratulations. Aleah Amos. Her name's Aleah, not Aleah, my apologies. Jamia Holman. Lauren Randolph. Congratulations. All right, Skylar Davis. Chidaiman Gregory. Tenasha Johnson. Cedra Daniel. Nevea Booker. Logan Ragland. McCalla Thompson. Elena Ballou. Nikia Chambers. Coach Kelly Chambers. I can pronounce this, Coach Shanice Miles. So did you just briefly want to say about their record and how they did real quick during the last season? If you don't mind.
Sure, thank you. First, I want to say that, you know, we're very honored to have these girls. They're not only athletes, but they're also academic athletes, which majority of the team was a AB student athlete going through. Having an undefeated James River District season, which we put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into that. And then also winning the James River District Championship and the tournament championship as well. And we also have four seniors who will be leaving us and, you know, we're happy to say that all four students will be going on to continue their education at a university college. Really, you know, desire to preach with these girls about, you know, it's not just about basketball. So we appreciate you all for recognizing the team and for a great season.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, and our last presentation of tonight, which I'm sure everyone is interested in, is item J three, Galen Creekmore and Gary Wood with Central Virginia Electric Cooperative Broadband Update. And we welcome you both here.
Well, thank you. It's great to be back in Buckingham. I am Galen Creekmore. We do have Mr. Gary Wood with us tonight. We're going to split the presentation because there's really two main things we want to get across to the board this evening. First is a current update on what is happening on the ground in Buckingham now. And then later, Mr. Wood will come up and talk about the, give a, what we call our RISE Project update, that, that large regional VATI application that the county partnered, partnered on with us. Mr. Wood will give an update on what, what next steps will look like in the county and what work will be happening in the future. So let's go to the next slide. A reminder about the partnership that we embarked on. Last time we were before, before the board, we showed you a map that on the next slide, you'll see similar. Just as a quick reminder, what our VATI application at that time, when we were before the board, we talked about our regional VATI application. That application is now a successful grant and that's part of what we want to update tonight. But really, what you're interested in is on the next slide and in Buckingham in particular. The blue shaded portion here is primarily the CVEC Fiber Build footprint, which is a current Firefly footprint right now. The yellow portion is primarily what's served by Dominion Energy and, and what was included in that VATI application that, that's part of the future work that Mr. Wood will speak to later. And in fact, on your agenda this evening, under N, agenda item N two, you will consider a continuation of that contractual agreement that you already partnered on us with on that VATI application. And Mr. Wood will speak to that a little later. So let's get into what work is happening now in that, really mainly in that blue portion. If we go to the next slide, there'll be a lot of words there because it's, we're blessed in Buckingham to have a lot to update on what's going on. There's a lot of work that's been done, a lot going on. Some counties we go to, we just have to focus on that future work. Luckily in Buckingham, we can talk about the connections that have already been made and what's going on. First and foremost, I want to highlight that the main line fiber construction is complete throughout the county. That means we're building drops off of that main line and splicing work is going on to make those final connections. You'll recall at the beginning of this project, when we announced the CVC Fiber Build back in two thousand eighteen to the county, we talked about a five-year build being two thousand twenty-three before we finished that main line construction. Where a year, we, we spoke with our board and made a commitment to accelerate that timeline and we're happy to announce that in Buckingham, that main line fiber construction is complete. So the areas where there's drop construction happening and final splicing, where, where folks will see the last remaining activity as far as drop construction going from the road, kind of coming down to the house, will be in the, there's some splicing going on the Mount Rush Substation area and there's drop construction still going on the Centenary Substation area. The areas that are in service, Curdsville, I mentioned Mount Rush, some splicing going on. And I put in parentheses, that area along the river, what we might recall as the area surrounding in and around Yogaville, would be the northwest corner along the river. That's actually not served by, we think of things in substation builds. It's actually not served by our Mount Rush Substation. It's actually served across the river from Skylar, our Skylar Substation up towards the border of Nelson and Abmaw County. But it made sense to include that portion of Buckingham with our Mount Rush build. So more good news that those folks are actually coming online before they really would be scheduled out of the Skylar Substation, so they're included there. A Tower Hill Substation is actually in Appomattox, but crosses over into the border. Likewise, Pamplin, our Pamplin Substation is in service. That also crosses a lot in Appomattox, but also into Buckingham. Gladstone is actually in Nelson County, but crosses the border and serves the James River State Park area in the county. And that's also in service. I won't read all those numbers to you, but you can see the work that's going on and the work still yet to be done. It's an eighteen million dollar investment of our, that represents the current work that's in the ground or, or actively going on right now. When we finish our final connections in the county, we see that, that figure being north of twenty million total investment in the county, once, once we finish that. You'll see the miles we've, we've currently built and still, that, that miles total will go up because of that drop construction that's going on in, you know, that north, northern section of the county in Centenary. But that's a snapshot of what is currently going on in the county. I also want to note now, so that we can underscore it later, that we do get a lot of questions on what resources are there to know what the schedule is on the CVC side. What, what's the schedule for connection and am I included in the RISE project area? Mr. Wood will speak to a slide later that shows the online resources that we have. But I want to underscore it now that if you go on fireflyva.com, point your citizens to those resources. We actually have a Buckingham County page where they can go on and see that logo right behind you all. Click on that Buckingham County logo, you'll see these maps and you'll see timelines for where we're working now and what's coming in the future. And speaking of what's coming in the future, Mr. Woods will touch on some of that, what we call our RISE Project status update.
Thank you, Galen. Thanks for giving us the chance to come and talk to you tonight. I apologize for having a few bandages. I had a run in with my dermatologist last Friday and she was the only one carrying a knife, but I got away without too much damage. So next slide, let's talk about the RISE Project, which is the area outside of the CVC footprint. And we're going to cover a big portion of the rest of the county with that. Our total project is pretty large, but in Buckingham County alone, we'll be spending another twenty-seven million dollars. That's in addition to the twenty million we've put in. So there'll be another twenty-seven million dollar investment. It's more expensive when you get off system, so even though we're not going as many miles or past as many homes, it actually costs us more. We're building on Dominion Lines, they'll be building some also and leasing to us and building in the South Side area. And last year, we asked the state for a, for some grant funds to help offset that cost because it's more expensive. And we asked the county and you were gracious enough to give this or commit one and a half million dollars. The state has three point nine million that they're putting in. And those two are going to be covered in that agreement we're going to talk about later. We just, we're to the contract phase of that piece. All total, we'll end up with over eight hundred miles of fiber and we'll end up going past about seventy-five hundred total passings. We'll actually have more than that. That's the number that VATI will pay for. So if, if we're going down a road and let's say we're coming down Route fifteen, there are areas right next to Route fifteen that have cable available. They are not included in this, but we're going to be running on the poles past those homes to get to the homes that do not have that service available. We will offer service to every home that we go by. But the ones that already have options aren't included in this total because they're not allowed to be recovered from grant funds. But we'll still have the service there and we'll make it available. So when you see these numbers, this is what the grant funds will help pay for, plus what CVC's paid for. We'll give you a total at the end that effectively everybody in Buckingham County, one way or the other, will get options to this. So total VATI grant was seventy-nine million dollars. I will say, DHCD has been great to work with on all previous grants. I think when the money got bigger this year, they decided they needed more bells and whistles. So we've been working since December on a contract, which is way too long. But we're, we're going to wrap that up soon and we have already started work. Next slide. Here are the areas that we have under construction presently. Centenary, we have finished putting the fiber up, as Galen said, and we're splicing. We should be finished splicing in the next week or two. Then we've got the service drops to put in. We're still putting in those service drops or service extensions at Mount Rush. I think we've got another probably two hundred or so in the Mount Rush area to do. And then we're going to have probably six to seven hundred in the Centenary area to do. We'll continue those throughout this year. We've got another USDA grant that's a small piece. We'll cover a few areas in the eastern, in eastern Buckingham along Route sixty. That work is also waiting on a contract to be finalized and working with some of these agencies. It's nice to get the funds, but man, it's pulling teeth to get there. We expect to be released to start that work anytime in the next couple of weeks. We'll then start field investigation things. That'll be ongoing later this year. And then the final piece will be where we're on the Dominion Lines coming down Route fifteen toward Dillon out of Fluvana. That work, we have started doing the planning work with Dominion on. They'll have a lot of work to do in the field before they start construction and that'll probably happen, the construction piece, in the second half of next year, toward the end of the year, maybe. It's going to take a while because we depend on a partner. Next slide. This is just a reminder that from the time we start work in an area, it normally takes about six months until you actually see service activated. People get really excited when we first show up and that is because the need is so incredible out there. But it takes a while. This is building infrastructure. We're happy that we've been able to do as much as we have in four years, but sometimes it gets a little frustrating to folks when they've seen truck after truck go by and they're wondering, well, when do I get connected? You keep driving by here, the fiber's been out on the pole for two months and nobody's knocked on my door yet to tell me it's time to connect. But uh we're moving as quickly as we can. This is just a reminder of the different people who are involved. Uh instead of the make-ready engineering construction, you're saying A P, it should say Dominion in this area. But it's a similar slide when we work in other partner areas. Uh next slide. This is just a reminder that you can't see that it's the same rates off-system as it is for C V C members. It's forty-nine ninety-nine for a hundred megabit service, it's seventy-nine ninety-nine for gigabit service. Uh telephone service, if you get it with one of those two, is twenty-nine ninety-nine. It's a really simple concept, there aren't a lot of bells and whistles to it. There aren't a lot of different packages to pick from, there's no introductory pricing, there's no contract, there's no data limits, there's no slowdowns. Um and it's the same service when we're in these non-C V C areas as when we're in the C V C. Next slide. This is just a reminder of the uh Firefly VA dot com that Galen referenced um that specific page. If you do the Rise project, you can either get to it by going and clicking on the Rise project on the main page or going to this uh this specific uh address. And it gives you the the various counties and you can pick in the county and and go in and see and put in your address and see if you're in the area or not. So with that, that's a quick update to what we have done already and what we're planning to do. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Does any member of the board have a question for Mr. Wood or Mr. Creekmore by chance?
I do.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Matthews.
How are you doing?
All right.
I noticed uh in the buildup on uh connections and stuff for
Uh huh.
uh Central Virginia and you noted, you mentioned Dominion, but you didn't mention Southside Electric, which uh in my district, I have several customers that are Southside Electric, so what's the deal with that?
We we're covering those two, it's about thirty, I think, and we, yeah, yes, sir. I'm I I apologize for not covering, we absolutely intend to get them.
Yeah, I'm still getting phone calls on, in my district, which is Curdsville District. And you know, we should be online as far as uh stuff, but people are just not familiar. Maybe they're just not familiar with the internet or whatever on how to get connected to uh Firefly. So uh if they go to C V C uh C E V C, I mean.
Yeah, if they, if they, so the State Corporation Commission is kind of strange. They do not let C V C tell its members that we have a subsidiary that sells internet and sign them up. We have to have them call in to Firefly. We can't tell them, you can call Firefly, but they have to call to that different organization. Um but if they do call, we can give them that information, if they can call C V C. Uh Firefly is one, do we have the?
Eight-three-three Fire.
That's the eight-hundred number.
It's uh, we'll get it and and make sure that it it's available here. But um it's a eight-hundred number, I was thinking it was eight Firefly one. On the first slide, let's let's slide before this, can we go back one? Yeah, there it is at the bottom, eight-three Firefly one. Trying to remember how to write the number and spell it, but that that's supposed to make it easy to remember. It's also got the uh the flyer, uh it has it on the website, we have it. So if you're going on online, you have to have Firefly VA dot com, not just Firefly. And if you're dialing the number, it is eight-three and then the letters for Firefly and then the number one. And um if you can't remember either of those, if you call the co-op and ask them how to get in touch with Firefly, they can tell you that. They just can't take your information, connect you.
One more question, Mr. Wood. On the billing side of it, I mean, a couple of people have asked me, how are they gonna be billed? Is it gonna be on their power bill if they're uh Central Virginia or is it gonna be a separate bill altogether?
It's required to be a separate bill and we make it a separate bill. In fact, um Firefly prefers paperless billing, so we offer email bills. If if you want a paper bill, we actually charge you for a paper bill because it costs us extra to do it. Uh so we uh but since you have the internet, hopefully most people, and and we have, we've got thirteen thousand five hundred people uh now online or a little more than that, and I think we have about fifteen hundred that take the paper bill, so.
And is uh, since Curdsville was the test market for that uh a couple of years ago, then you know, I'm very pleased that the constituents in my district were chosen to to be able to uh get that s- service from Central Virginia. Have you, at one point in time, you gave some figures of how many houses you thought you might be connected to at some point in time? So what is that figure now?
Um I I could get you specific figures, but when we first started this project, we hoped to get thirty-five percent of the people we passed within the first two years. Um I believe Curdsville is upward of sixty percent, maybe sixty-five percent
That's good.
today, so it is, i- it that's just indicative of the need and how much uh people really need to have access to broadband in today's world. After COVID, it it just became more emphasized. And we've worked really hard to make sure the costs are competitive. Uh I didn't mention up here, we we do offer the uh Affordable Connectivity Plan, it's called A C P. It's a federal plan that uh will pay up to uh thirty dollars a month, I think. And uh out of the fifty that um we charge, so uh that there are ways you can access that, there's about a dozen different ways to qualify for it. Basically, anybody who qualifies otherwise for free lunch uh for um a lot of different federal programs. Or if you're a veteran, you can sign up and get that benefit.
Thank you, I appreciate everything that uh Central Virginia's done. I made the statement when this project first started that this project, Firefly, is probably as important as electrification in the state of Virginia uh in our day and time. And I I still believe that and and that shows sixty percent of the people in my district are are catching on. And that's only been online for maybe a year or two, so and I look forward to be better. So thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
One quick question for you, Mr. Wood. Uh when when do you think that um Firefly, that ever that everyone intended will be connected? And and then when would Rise end, do you think, roughly?
So Rise, we have a three-year timeframe. It starts with the contract signing, which we're trying to get signed in the next few weeks if we can. Um and uh so thirty-six months, that puts us to mid twenty-five, is that right? Yes, twenty-two. Um the uh C V C piece, we anticipate having the folks on C V C who sign up as we first come through and and who signed up by now. Uh they should be on before the year is over. Really, in Buckingham, they should be on probably um by fall, um early part of fall. We still have a lot of work to do in a few areas after that to, and we're committed to finishing all of C V C up this year.
Sure.
Um the Rise project will then uh pick up speed and and over the next couple of years, we'll cover all that area.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board for Mr. Wood?
So the Rise project is the yellow part of the map. Rise is the yellow part, and it it includes both that reconnect piece and the Dominion piece and the Southside. And you're looking for most of that to be done by twenty twenty-five? It'll all be done by twenty twenty-five. All right, the ones that's already been done are real tickle with it, so I'm glad to hear that you're still working. Yes, yeah, I think we had a couple of services that came down in a storm this weekend in Buckingham that we were putting back up this morning. Uh it's interesting now that um in most cases, the internet's still available when your power's out. If you have a generator, if you have another source of power. The it's rare for the uh cables themselves to be damaged on the fiber side. We did have a couple this weekend and people are just as interested in getting their internet back as they are getting their electricity back.
Absolutely, well, on behalf of the board, thank you all for your investment and your hard work in connecting our constituents. So thank you for being here, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item is item K one, B dot Road Matters, Scott Frederick, resident, division resident engineer with Road Matters. So thank you for being here.
Evening Chairman. Board, uh thank you for having me. Uh quick update, uh we're working on primary mowing right now. Uh I was looking at fifteen on my way up here, I think it looks a lot better this year than it did last year. We've made some good efforts to get the trash picked up through the winter.
Excellent.
So it's looking a lot better. We're complete on our secondary mowing, we've done the litter removal as well on those routes. Um so both sets of roads are, you know, looking real good with their first cut completing. Um as far as the rural rustic program goes, uh Road Route six thirty, Red Road on my way here tonight, it turned out great. So that was a long time coming for that one.
It was.
Finally got it connected all the way from fifteen over to sixty, so I wish it would have been all done at one time. But that's, I guess neither here nor there now, so. Um we're finishing up Hunting Shack Road, we'll probably complete it tomorrow, uh putting that final shot down on the top. Uh that's Route six sixty-eight. Then we're also working on Payne's Pond Road, Route six seventy-nine. Uh probably have that one done middle of next week is my guess. Um looking at the schedules. And then there's a Ivy Road is also on the list to do this year, we've got the stone down on it. Uh and the the way our schedule's working out, it's gonna work out well because there's a logger working on that road currently. I think they're cutting, if I'm not mistaken, about four hundred acres of timber. So want him to get finished up before we go in there and build a brand-new road, so. Uh so it's all gonna work out well, we'll get Ivy Road a little bit uh later this summer. Um some pipe replacements we've uh worked on. We replaced a double sixty-inch line of pipe on Route six sixty-two. And we're currently working on Route seven eighteen, replacing a, it was a triple line of pipe. It's, we're putting a double uh barrel box culvert in on that route. Um so that one should be done. I've heard that they're gonna put the asphalt back over the top of the box culvert this week, so it's getting real close to being done. Um the only other thing I had to update you guys on this month is uh the locations that we talked about at the last meeting for the speed readers, we called them, the the speed limit signs that display your speed. I've submitted those to Traffic Engineering, so they're in the process of reviewing that. And once they're finished, I'll update you guys on that, but they seem interested in in participating in that.
Very good. Uh let's start with Supervisor Allen, go down the road with any district issues with V dot.
I forgot the name, that Randolph?
Randolph Creek.
Yeah.
Randolph Creek Road, did you add it back into your six-year plan? Or did you look back and see it or find it?
You know, I'll have to double-check, I
Okay.
Forgot to do that, so I apologize, I might write down a note right now.
That all?
Oh, okay.
Supervisor Bryant?
Yeah, Halville Road needs some brush cut back.
Okay. Six oh two.
You good Supervisor Bryant?
Yeah.
Supervisor Matthews?
Uh yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple things. First is uh, I think Mr. Wood hit on it a while ago, there were some storms in the county and there has been some debris on some of the secondary roads. Has the state been working on that a little bit?
We are.
Okay. You still got some more to do uh soon or?
Yeah, we've we've been continuously cleaning it up, but uh
The Curdsville Road, I know there were several trees that got blown down on that uh right on the right-of-way or the ditch. And uh seven sixty-nine, which is Highview Road.
Okay.
Several there, there was a gentleman, uh I'm just gonna recognize him, his name is Gaston Peak. He doesn't live in my district, but he was on that road and actually helped remove some of the debris that was on the road, so.
On seven sixty-nine?
Seven sixty-nine, I do appreciate that.
Well, we'll check that out.
Okay. Uh Mr. Carter, I asked a question uh a couple of weeks ago about a matter that happened a couple of months ago with Ms. Meek up in uh I think that's Chambers's district. Uh anybody contact her from V dot or did do we know as as far as that? Do you remember that discussion we had at a meeting uh on the on the entrance on a road that's not twenty?
Right.
That's not
It's a private road, if I'm not mistaken. Forest path, yeah. Uh that we've looked into it, I don't know that I've, I personally don't think I've talked to her. I think Steve Snell and maybe Charles Edwards, Dee Dee has contacted her.
As of about two weeks ago, she hadn't received any contact from anybody.
Okay, well, I I made a point to make sure that she was, so I'm gonna follow up on that. I spent like an hour in the parking lot with her after the last meeting, so. I feel pretty confident that she was reached out to, but I'm gonna double-check.
Maybe in after the fact, after that.
Maybe so.
Well, she left a message on my phone, so at that time, she hadn't been contacted, so that was about two and a half, three weeks ago.
Okay, yeah, I'll follow, like I said, I'll follow up with it again and make sure that she's been reached out to. Sometimes we can't do anything to bring one of those roads in, but.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Thank you for trying.
Yes, sir, no problem.
Uh Vice Chairman Chambers?
He answered my question, he said you'll shoot Payne Pond Road by next week sometime?
Yeah, it should finish up next week, they're uh they're working on it now.
Thank you.
For the Maisel District, Mr. Frederick, um if, on on behalf of the residents of Red Road, thank you for, thank V dot for finally taking care of that situation that's been haunting people. Um the road that I have a question about, I brought it up last meeting or meeting before last. Troublesome Creek Road needs some attention, it's a heavily pop, it's a heavily traveled road. And I think I said last time, it's like tanks have drawn, have have been driven down there. It's just, it's in not not the best shape. Um and there were two roads that I gave you uh several weeks ago. Um and I'll shoot you an email with those names, but I would I'd like to see if they were built to state specs to see if they can perhaps be included in the state system.
Okay, so they're also private roads?
Right now, they are, yes.
Okay.
Um that concludes
Okay.
what I have, Supervisor Brian?
Yes, sir, um just remind your grass-cutting people, when they run over garbage and it explodes and goes all over the place, they need to clean it up.
Right, well, the idea is to get it before we mow.
Oh, it was, it went everywhere.
Okay, I apologize that that happened. Uh which road specifically?
Six thirty-two.
Six twenty-two?
Six thirty-two.
Six thirty-two, all right.
Right across from where Mr. Hardeman used to live.
Yeah, well, last year, a few spots like that were brought to my attention, I sent them out there to pick it up after the fix. I mean, you pick up trash one day and it's back the next, but
There's nothing you can do.
Yes, but some some stuff that should not hit, so.
Supervisor Davis?
Yeah, there are a couple of things, uh there's a pothole on Cardinalsville Road, which is six-ten.
Okay.
Right after you pass Little Creek coming from fifteen, that will knock your whole front end off one of your trucks.
Okay.
So it's pretty bad, it needs to be fixed. And my other question is, when is the, I think the oldest brush that's piled up is gonna be took care of?
Right, yeah, that's, so I think I updated you guys on that a few meetings ago. Uh we put that out to a bid and we were assuming that our bids were gonna come in similar to what that came in after the ice storm or the tropical storm Michael cleanup. Uh our bids were almost double what we estimated them to come in at.
A few was six dollars a gallon, you gotta figure that into it.
Yeah, uh even with that into account, it was still so high that we put it back out to rebid with more options than it to hopefully bring the price back to down to a level we can afford. Um so it's currently out on the street, as we call it, advertised for those bids and should close in the next two weeks and then
I wondered why, when they had it loaded on the trucks, you couldn't make a deal with the chip mill and let them took care of it. One pop, haul it ready to the chip mill, be chipped and suit two purposes, but.
Best way did get your gallon of gas and a match and take it.
Right.
No comment on that, but to your first part of that comment, the procurement laws prevent some of those type of deals from working as easily as they sound. But as these storms continue, maybe we can work out some kind of arrangements like that. We're always trying to get better.
My last question was just on seven eighteen, the bridge, but that's, you say they're gonna put asphalt down this week, so.
Yeah, that's what I was told earlier today.
Yeah, I hope so, you're gonna run me crazy, eighteen miles, go feed my dogs and I gotta go around the world.
Yeah.
Before we go back to
On seven eighteen, so.
On the pothole on six-ten, did you say about where that was at a second ago?
Just past, if you're coming from fifteen, it's just past Little Creek Road. It'll be in the left-hand lane coming towards fifteen, it's it's big and it's deep.
Okay, well, we shouldn't have a problem finding it.
You meet another car there, it'll knock your front end off one of your vehicle.
Okay, yeah, I'll send them out there tomorrow.
Mr. Frederick, before we go to Supervisor Matthews, could you perhaps bring us um accident history at sixty and twenty-four when you can? Mr. Frederick, before we go to Supervisor Matthews, could you perhaps bring us, um, accident history at sixty and twenty-four when you can?
Oh, yeah, I looked into that. I got an email from Cody and I had sent, there was one accident there in the last five years.
Okay.
Right in the intersection.
Right at the intersection.
It was going off memory, but it was daylight, no adverse conditions and single car accident.
Sure.
So somebody ran off the road.
Supervisor Matthews?
Yes, sir. I forgot one other thing, uh, Mr. Frederick. There's a tree on six thirty-six, going west away from Shepherd's. On the right-hand side of the road is right before, uh, Tommy Manus's hog houses, uh, beating pretty severely.
Okay.
Right past Concord Church. On the right-hand side of the road. I've had two people call me about that.
Alright, we can take a look at it. Do you know if it's alive or dead?
They didn't say.
Okay, well, we'll check it out. I put right by the Concord Baptist Church, you said?
Past that.
Past.
Right-hand side, right. The next thing you'll see would be the hog houses will be on your left.
Okay.
Any other issues for Mr. Frederick before we move on, gentlemen?
I just wanna thank them both fifteen. They're doing a good job on it.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Looks good.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Frederick.
You guys have a good night.
Our next agenda item is item L, public hearings. We have two public hearings scheduled. I know, right, many people have signed up for, uh, the first one and you get three minutes, please, and please conclude your remarks at the end of the three minutes. And the first one is L one, sale of industrial park property pursuant to Code Section fifteen point two dash eighteen hundred of the Code of Virginia on the county selling certain real property described as containing one hundred and twenty-five point two seven five acres, more or less, and one hundred and fourteen point four seven acres and zero point eight oh four acres being shown on preliminary plats by Maxine Associates PC dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. One entitled Survey of Division of Tax Parcel Number eight, one thirty-eight dash five, and the other entitled Division and Boundary Line Adjustment. The other ten acres, more or less, is the land between the two parcels shown on the, uh, reference plats and is part of Tax Parcel one thirty-eight dash fifteen. Uh, so what we're gonna do first is, uh, we're going to turn, uh, to Ms. Edmiston for a brief presentation. And then Mr. Carter as well.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and everyone in attendance this evening. Prior to opening up the public hearing, we're gonna give a bit of background regarding the industrial park. I think it's important to remember the vision statement of Buckingham and what our true, um, thought processes are as far as our board supervisors and administration. Buckingham County is a model of, can you go back? Is a model of planned residential and business development that ensures sufficient managed economic growth to enhance the quality of life of its residents, attracts desired socially responsible new businesses, and ensures a fiscally sound county government that is responsive to the needs of its residents and businesses while maintaining tax rate at a responsible level and while preserving the desired rural characteristics of the county. Buckingham, of course, is centrally located in the very heart of Virginia. It's five hundred and eighty square miles of gently rolling landscape, residences, churches, and community businesses. Current population is sixteen thousand eight twenty-four. We're conveniently located twenty minutes to Dillon from outlying areas of the county, an hour to Richmond, Charlottesville, Lynchburg, and three hours to Washington DC. Our schools are committed to developing the future one student at a time, and currently we have Buckingham County preschool, Buckingham County primary school, Buckingham County elementary school, middle school, and high school. It's important to note that the total enrollment for the twenty twenty-one school year is two thousand ten, which was down from the twenty eighteen nineteen total of two thousand one twenty-seven. Why Buckingham? Buckingham offers many things to both existing and potential residents and businesses, and the better question is, why not Buckingham? The many things we have to offer include preservation of our rural integrity through responsible planning, responsible planning for growth and development with a competitive tax rate, a major broadband initiative for connectivity of our citizens, beautiful natural resources and state parks creating a desired destination for tourism. The county is committed to the enhancement of the overall quality of life for its citizens. And of course, let's not forget that Buckingham is an embracing and supportive community of wonderful citizens. Some challenges posed or opportunities by the development of the industrial park would include traffic. All traffic patterns and/or adjustments will have to comply with VDOT. Public safety to include law enforcement, fire, EMS, and solid waste. All of these entities are based on demand. For example, if the sheriff's office needs more deputies, then that is a request that the board of supervisors will address. Based on designs provided by the developer, the homes will be serviced by current fire equipment and there will not be a need for specialized equipment such as a ladder truck. Water and sewer. Both facilities were recently upgraded to increase capacity. The board had the foresight to do this in case economic development were to come to this county. The infrastructure is in place. Our schools. The public school system average daily membership has declined over the past few years, so the school facilities can handle an increase in enrollment. Medical. The board of supervisors recently donated the old medical building in Dillon to Center for, for the purpose of providing medical services. And of course, our rural nature. The county's rural feel will still be felt and appreciated. This project is going to an area of the county where we want growth through business and/or development. And so it will not have an effect or an impact negatively on the rural factors of the county. Improving the quality of life. Buckingham County Board of Supervisors continually supports its mission to fulfill and improve the quality of life of its citizens in the following key areas. Education, public safety by way of law enforcement, animal control, court system, emergency response, health safety, building safety, land preservation with erosion and sediment controls and conservation. Solid waste. Um, there are collection sites offered, um, in various areas of the county entire day. Water and sewer, as I mentioned prior, recent expansion to accommodate short-term and long-term growth. And many amenities to include parks, recreation, youth athletic and arts, senior programs, um, to include yoga and zumba programs and many others. And our library and community center. Our promotion of services and opportunities by way of support of internet and increased broadband coverage, business opportunities, the hotel, Gold Hill School Project, and the internet, uh, which was addressed this evening so wonderfully by C-Vac, Gary Wood and Galen Creek Moore. Housing, health services, tourism, medical services, arts and cultural opportunities. Economy of Buckingham depends on the following industries for both tax revenue influx and job creation for its residents. Logging and ancillary industry to include trucking, sawmills, timber, and land management. Farming and agriculture, mining and associated heavy industry. Public service to include court system, county administration, health department, social services. Construction, railroad and public transportation, public safety, EMS, sheriff's department, local prisons, public education, and small businesses. Moving Buckingham forward. Buckingham County continues to update its comprehensive plan to focus on areas that can attract and sustain growth. Growth should focus on mixed densities of commercial, residential, and industrial areas. The county must address challenges like those listed here and so that forward progress can be reached. A stagnant growth plan will have negative impacts on the budget and services offered to current citizens, further hindering the potential for attracting new project, projects and resident, my, excuse me, migration. Mr. Chairman, that is a brief overview of the industrial park development. I'll turn this back to you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Edmiston. Mr. Carter, are you ready to?
Yes.
Offer some detail? Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, I will talk more about the actual, uh, contract that's before you tonight. Uh, this public hearing is to consider Buckingham County Board of Supervisors wishes to sell one hundred twenty-five point two eight acres of land, which is currently recognized as industrial park to Atlantic Investment Corporation for the purpose of townhomes, single-family homes, and light industrial slash commercial businesses. The goal of this project is to take the county property that is currently not on the tax books and has not been for years and develop it to substantially add to the tax base. If the development is done in a timely fashion while meeting specific goals or benchmarks, the selling price will reduce by applying certain credits. The overall goal is to add a minimum fifteen million dollars to our tax base within five years. Uh, and if you do that math, uh, we get about a hundred fifty thousand dollars per penny. That would be a whole dollar you would get on your real estate. Along with adding tax base, back tax base, other benefits will be provided such as adding a new VDOT-approved road from Wingo Road and adding some light industrial slash commercial businesses. The new road will be, have to be accessible by the public within two years from closing and must be accepted by VDOT, to the VDOT road system within four years from closing. The base price of the property is six thousand dollars per acre with credits for meeting certain goals and benchmarks. The goals, some of the goals and benchmarks are as follows. First thing is three hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred forty dollars due to the county at closing. The remaining balance is to be paid by a promissory note at five percent interest on five annual payments due each year on the anniversary of the closing date. Uh, the first year is interest only in arrears. The second year is accrued interest in arrears. The third year will be one-third of unpaid principal balance plus interest. The fourth year will be one-third of unpaid principal balance plus interest. And then the fifth year, of course, will be the same, will be the entire unpaid principal balance plus interest. The closing date cannot be later than December third of twenty twenty-two, so it has to close this fiscal year, this calendar year. Uh, ten thousand dollars will be paid at the sign of the contract and will be held in a non-interest-bearing account. These funds can be going toward the purchase price. It can be held by the county in case of default by, by the buyer or can be returned to the seller in case of default by the county. If at the end of the first year from closing, the buyer has presented a detailed financial final development plan including roads, water, and sewer plans, other utilities, other utilities, the plan for light industrial commercial sites, the buyers will not be required to pay the thirty thousand of the principal and interest due at the end of the first year. At the end of the second year from closing, the buyer has constructed the road running from Wingo Road to the project and has obtained all required erosion settlement permits. The buyer will not be required to pay thirty thousand of the principal and accrued interest due at the end of the second year. At the end of the third year from closing, the buyer has added five million dollars to the real estate tax base in Buckingham County. The buyer will be not required to pay one-third of unpaid principal balance plus interest. The value added will be verified by the commissioner of revenue. At the end of the fourth year from closing, the buyer has added ten million dollars to the real estate tax base of Buckingham County. The buyer will not be required to pay one-third of unpaid principal balance plus interest. The value once again will be verified by the commissioner of revenue. At the end of the fifth year from closing, the buyer has added fifteen million to the real estate tax base of Buckingham County. The buyer will not be required to pay one-third of unpaid principal balance plus interest. Once again, all values will be verified by the commissioner of revenue. The property will also have to be rezoned as to Village, Village Center, which is B C one. And this is just some of the, um, items in the draft contract we've been working on and benchmarks. Uh, the draft contract is available for review if anybody wants to look at it, and I will never turn it back over to the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Ted Lord, you're with us here today as the developer. Could you briefly, if you're willing to address, uh, the project very briefly, please, and the board? Please. And then we'll open the public hearing. Thank you for being here.
No problem.
Thank you, uh, all supervisors for having me. I have never heard the, uh, vision statement before for the, uh, the county and, uh, this project Knights Valley subdivision. It, it embodies the, uh, the vision statement. It's properly planned growth. Um, from an economic standpoint, he, Carl mentioned fifteen million. If this project, uh, is fully built out, it adds thirty-five million to the tax base. What this community will do will create synergy throughout all the existing businesses in the county. Every, I, I, I own the Small Strip Center camera station and, uh, a number of my tenants have struggled through the years. I think I've had that now about fifteen years, maybe thirteen. And, uh, my tenants have come and gone because there's just not enough, uh, to feed the, uh, the tenants to keep them, oh, and everybody wants to back, you know, bounce back and forth and say the rent's too high. Well, the, the rent has to cover the bills and I've done my best to keep it very moderate. This community will add synergy throughout every single business, whether it's in my center, whether you're a car dealer, whether you're, you're a hair salon, you name it. Uh, it will create jobs. It will also, uh, create what I refer to as retained spending. The spending will go on in our county as opposed to going to Farmville, Lynchburg, Richmond. And all our, all the money that I've seen over the last fifteen, twenty years that I've been here, it, a lot of it runs elsewhere. Let's keep it in Buckingham and give the people in Buckingham an opportunity to grow and live a, you know, have a good wage and a good small business, you know, that they'd like. The community itself is gonna be a nice community. There's not gonna be any, uh, well, ghettos or, or, uh, bad areas. This is a, a planned proper development. All the roads will be turned over to VDOT when, when they're completed. Outside of that, it's, it was fortuitous for me to sit here and listen to the broadband, uh, that is on the, uh, that is an absolute draw for this community with, uh, the number of people that wanna work from home or they do, they, they travel in their work and they don't have a central office. So that really is a, a benefit. Resulting overall synergy for the county and this community when it's built. I hope you all find in favor of, uh, selling me the, the property to get started on this. My work is, is just, just now starting, if, if that's the case. I've got a lot ahead of me. And, uh, it's good for Buckingham. It's in the right area and, uh, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we are at the point to open the public hearing and again, three minutes, please conclude your remarks at, uh, three-minute mark. So Ms. Lan?
We have eight. Uh, we'll start with Daniel Brickhill, District Four.
Welcome, Mr. Brickhill.
Um, I live at one ninety-two Union Church Road in Mr. Miles's district. So if this development fits the mission or vision statement of Buckingham County, so while maybe the vision statement of Buckingham County needs to be changed. I'm here to oppose this building project because of the type of people. Because of the type of people it will attract to Buckingham County. Now, people have obviously moved to Buckingham County from other places before. But most of the time, they've been attracted to the features of our community that people who are generational residents of this community are also appreciate. They too desire a true rural lifestyle. The outsiders that will come as a result of this building project cannot be any more opposite of that. So a typical resident of this building project might be as follows. A UVA PhD student or a posh Charlottesville resident, uh, who grew up in a suburb of Northern Virginia. But surely this person's not moving to Buckingham because they appreciate long drives to the store, dirt roads, or plenty of Buckingham. No, a person, um, who's moving to Buckingham to live in a townhome does not appreciate the way Buckingham is now. They wanna change Buckingham and turn it into one more liberal town on the outskirts of Charl- Charlottesville. Our board of supervisors meetings, where moderate Democrats and traditional conservatives can get along in a friendly fashion, are gonna be overrun by far-left, overeducated Charlottesvilleans who just wanna stir up a lot of trouble before they graduate and move on. This applies from no matter where these outsiders come. We can be sure that people who wanna live in a townhome in Buckingham are here solely to exploit prices that are cheaper than the inflated cities from which they come. They aren't coming here to escape the, the culture of their cities. They're coming here to, uh, to escape the, uh, expense of those cities and bring the city culture with them. Now, some may not share my concerns for the type of people who will choose to move to a crowded subdivision in Buckingham. But those who feel that way should at least be concerned for the downstream effects of this building project that have nothing to do with the type of people who will live here. If this building project is successful, it will inevitably lead to more building projects, not just shops and stores, but more subdivisions. If it turns out that Buckingham is a great place to build a subdivision, other builders will wanna buy more land to also exploit the profits of our cheap real estate. The county won't be in the position to say no for the some, the same reason that some people are struggling to say no now. The Knights Valley subdivision offers a potential solution to budget shortcomings. But that's just gonna create demands for greater public services in the future. The budget, budget problems will continue to abate. The cycle will continue. And in ten years, when the next developer comes and wants to build another subdivision, the same excuses by the same accomplices will be made now that we have budget problems that we need to fix, and the cycle will continue on and on forever. So whether you're concerned for how this building project will affect the culture of our county or how it will create downstream effects that threaten the rural status of our county, you should oppose this project. Thank you.
Before we call our next speaker, I would, I would, uh, please, if you can, so we can hear and so the speaker can, can get their point of calls during, while they're speaking, please try to refrain and at the end, certainly you can show your desire, please, so we can hear. Okay, our next speaker?
Joseph Anthony, District Four.
Welcome, sir.
Miles Jordan, how you doing? Is everybody here? I, I've come to oppose the, uh, project as well. I, I came home from a wedding through, uh, Fluvana County just last weekend and I saw a sign that really hit home. It said, "Healthy forests create jobs." Not just pine forests, mind you, but well-managed hardwoods which are allowed to mature. In Buckingham County, with some vision and leadership, could become an old-growth corridor, well-positioned for a wonderful ecotourism business that would not destroy the rural nature of our county. nature of our county. The Knights Valley project is a terrible first step in the wrong direction, in my opinion. My wife couldn't come, but she wanted me to make sure I spoke for her as well. Her name is Chris Arbo. I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. Joseph Anthony from District Four. I live on Oak Hill Road. My wife is Chris Arbo. This is a terrible idea. What I love about Buckingham is its wildness, modesty, and lack of pretense. Why does it have to be about money? This would totally change the character of the area. This is what I got away from when I moved here 30 years ago. These reasons, I asked you to oppose the project as well, and there are better ways to pay the bills. I'm sure we can find them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Okay, Ms. Lann. Thank you for being here, Mr. Davis, and if you would please say your name and district.
My name's Ivan Davis. I live on Camden Street in Dillon, and District Four is the district I'm in with Jordan. I would like to comment on the proposed housing development at the industrial park. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for working to find ways to bring tax revenue into the county. In regards to the housing development, I am strongly opposed to this venture. I'm an entrepreneur. I own my own business. The developer for this project, he has every right to move his business forward, but I believe that what he's trying to sell here is something that Buckingham should not buy. This proposed community will not be for Buckingham citizens. Those are his words that, we went to the meeting at the library, that he said, this community is not for Buckingham citizens. This is for people that will travel from Richmond, Charlottesville, or wherever for Buckingham is not at a point to attract this type of person. There's little to offer them to come here or to stay here. Any money that, you know, they'll shop or eat in Richmond, you know, and then come here to stay, I mean, come here, you know, to live in their house. I've read a lot of numbers about the amount of tax revenue that this development will bring into the county. Other than the money for the sale of the land, all the other money that's being proposed is just pure speculation. Once you sell the land, it's sold. It's in somebody else's hands. He can do what he wants to with it. Most of the usable land as well that is being used is being used for housing. So this leaves a limited amount of area for the industry or business that could still possibly come, according to the plan. Y'all can talk to Maxie, who's done all the work and everything, and they've told me that themselves, that the land that's left, you know, that land is very swampy in different areas, and it's going to be difficult for anything else to ever come there. And my last point is the signal, and the signal this sends and the direction Buckingham takes if this project proceeds. Approving the sale of this land shows that Buckingham welcomes urban sprawl. I was going to say something about the comprehensive plan, but I guess y'all already showed that, so I don't need to say that. But we are a rural county, it says in the comprehensive plan. Agriculture and forestry generate most of the money for this county. Housing developments will not do that. How can we approve a housing development when we can't even approve land use taxation to help farmers, landowners, and loggers, who are the people that pay all the taxes anyway? I want my son to grow up in a small town in Dillon, and this is not that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right.
Casey Davis, District Four.
Welcome, Ms. Davis.
My name is Casey Davis, 903 Camden Street, Maysville District. Thank you for having us tonight. I am opposed to the housing development. I'll tell you, when I first heard it, my heart sank. I could not believe that small town, two-stable like Dillon, was going to be turned into a housing development or a subdivision. If we bring in people who can afford these homes, it is going to raise the median income for the county. This eventually is going to cause a rise in cost of goods for everybody else in the county. Think about us just shopping at Foodline, paying Foodline prices, now we have to shop at Wegman prices, just for example. That's going to put some of the costs out of the reach of some of the citizens that have lived here their entire lives. There's no doubt, the people are coming into Buckingham from different areas, and we are expecting many people to come to Buckingham in the future. The county knows that. That's okay. It's slow growth, just like Buckingham, a good, slow community, and that's what we need. Why would people want to come from the city to live in Dillon with an HOA? Said, "We were told that there are areas that have been set up for development that have not fulfilled that desire." I asked, "Why not 10 acres somewhere?" "Oh, well, people don't want to bush hog." Well, the point of the industrial park, the point of Buckingham, is to get jobs to come in, so hire somebody that wants to bush hog. Don't fill up a housing development that's going to fill up with so many houses. I asked my brother, who's lived here in Buckingham County for years, he's lived in the cities, he's lived in California, all different places. He's seen everything, he's lived with HOAs. I said, "So would you commute to Richmond, to Charlottesville, to do this?" And he said, "Heck, no." So why would somebody want to do this with rising cost of gas prices, rising cost of housing prices, and a push for people who are working from home to go back to work? That is what the target market for this housing development is. I believe that what we've heard from developers, a lot of yes-ers and dreams. I think that we are overstepping our reach in our county, and I believe this growth is too much, and again, it will send the signal, we're open for subdivisions, and where will it stop? HOAs, many people have complained about HOAs and how they restrict a lot of stuff, and again, why would you want to move to the country, away from the city, to be controlled by what they can do with their land? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you. So my name's Jake Eubanks, live at 470 Hidden Valley Drive, Mr. Matthews Precinct. If I heard you correctly, you're talking about three separate parcels of property? 140-some acres? 150 acres? 125 acres? Well, even being 125 acres, that's a large step. And to be honest with you, when I think of an industrial zone, I don't think of housing or townhouses. I mean, like my man was talking about over there, I mean, it's all speculation. Once you sell the property, and you're talking about $6,000 an acre, we've all seen what property prices have done. Yeah, it's flatlining, and it's cooling down, but $6,000 an acre is steel for our prime real estate in our industrial pork. We're talking about 100-and-so-mort acres, we're getting ready to sell for $6,000 an acre in what's supposed to be our industrial pork. Now, I'm all about tax base, don't get me wrong. I understand economics, I'm all about, okay? But I'm talking about growth at a pace that, I mean, is like nothing we've ever seen. You don't know who's going to come, you don't know what you're going to invite. I've got a rental property, and I can tell you, 90% of the people that have called me are either looking to come out of New York, they're looking to come out of New Jersey, they're looking to come from Charlottesville, they're looking to come from Scottsville. It's not exactly the type of, some of them, it's not exactly the type of mentality you want in a rural community. I mean, their way of thinking, it just doesn't align up with us. They're going to wind up with a high cost of living. It's just not what Buckingham County is supposed to be. I've lived here for over 20 years. I love Buckingham County. I mean, like I said, when I hear townhomes, I don't think of, I don't think of industry, and it's supposed to be an industrial pork. I mean, if you look at Prince Edward, look at where their townhomes are, do you see any industry around there? No, you don't. It becomes affordable housing, and we're going to sell the property for $6,000 an acre. And yeah, a lot of it is swampy land. You look at the development that was supposed to happen in Cumberland County, the strip mall over there, the reason why it fell through is because some of it was considered wetlands. And anything about wetlands is, if you're going to develop it, now the EPA mandates, you have to buy other property that's perfectly good and turn it into wetlands. So the property you have down there that's going to be wetlands, if you want to develop it, you're going to have to turn other property that's good, to perfectly good use, into wetland. So there's a whole lot of different angles to...
If you'll conclude, Mr. Eubanks. If you'll conclude your time, though.
Yep, so, I mean, there's just a whole lot of different angles to think about. It's not something we want to be jumping into half-cocked.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Sarah Large, District One.
Welcome, Ms. Large.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Sarah Large. I live at the intersection of Mr. Davis and Mr. Allen in the Little Creek-Trentsmill area. I'm here tonight to ask you to please oppose this project, because it's been told to us on multiple occasions that this is not for the people of Buckingham. My question is, why would we entertain a project that's not for Buckingham, when our vision statement that was just read to us is to keep Buckingham rural with controlled growth? It was also obvious to us that a lot of planning on this project was done well before the public was even made aware that this was coming down the pike. Buckingham County has repeatedly turned down the adoption of land use assessment, which is to preserve rural Buckingham. As our vision statement said, that's a goal we have. We've been told it wasn't necessary, because Buckingham was never going to get major growth, but here we are, major growth happening all at one time. I'm not opposed to growth. There's good growth, there's bad growth. Bedroom communities, as neighboring counties have proven, cost the county more than they'll ever bring in. Yes, our schools can handle this now. Yes, our systems can handle it now, but what does the future hold? Do we know that new schools won't need to arise? New schools always come with a tax increase to pay for them. We understand that. But is this what Buckingham needs? We've been told this is necessary to keep our taxes low, but if we have a bedroom community that costs us more than it generates, are we going to keep our taxes low? Neighboring counties have land use assessment, they're preserving that rural part, but their tax base is increasing on the other end. My wish is that you would just keep the best interests of Buckingham residents in mind, and that if this is not for the people of Buckingham, please do your work, please do your research, and let's have growth that is for the people of Buckingham. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Large. Thank you for being here, sir.
Gentlemen of the board, I appreciate...
Say your name if you don't...
Brian Davis, live over off 60 at Mount Rush. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I want to preface with, I have planned remarks, but it was just a little difficult to listen to Nikki almost present the county as selling the project. Good projects don't have to be sold by the county. Good projects speak for themselves. With all that said, I'll jump into the remarks I wanted to say. I understand this is a revenue conversation, and with that in mind, I would just implore the board to think about the transformational decisions that you're making now. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find other localities that would agree with you that increasing population is somehow going to miraculously lead to less expenditures for your residents, with people calm demands, especially when the stated goal of the developer is to market subdivision exclusively to people. Well, I don't want to say exclusively, he said... With that said, with the price point, I think we all know that this is intended to pull people in from other places. In my line of work, and I am a local business owner, I do see people moving to rural areas. You could talk to the board at Fluvan, and they would tell you, people will move to a pine thicket after COVID that come from cities, because if it has high-speed internet. So people will come to this. I'm more concerned with all the residents I've spoken to who think this is a joke. This is no joke. This is playing with fire. But with all that said, I would implore the, if it's an income conversation, I would ask the board to contemplate other opportunities to get income. I'm cognizant of the pressure you're under with taxes. Could we revisit a conversation about a mill's tax? This is not a way to go tackle a church. Other localities have mill's taxes that don't affect the congregants. There's other ways to think about money. I will talk about potential costs. With COVID, we saw the world change. Central Virginia Christian School increased enrollment, we pulled kids out of the public schools, homeschoolers took off, there's a lot more of those now, but the question I would say is, if the economy is turning and people's pocketbooks are going to be tackled a little bit with inflation, are they going to come back to you? We can't say for sure at the Christian school that they're going to stay in that realm. Are they going to come back? Are you going to be facing schools that, pre-COVID, had kids in trailers? With school shootings and everything else going on, do you want to be responsible for kids? Is that safe to you to have them in trailers? With, I don't have time for all the comments I have, but I just ask you to maybe pump the brakes a little bit. This is a transformational development. If it's that great, you got time, there's a lot of residents in this county that still don't even know. I understand you've tried to advertise what's going on, but please go back and talk to your constituents.
Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you.
And our last speaker, Ms. Lann.
Teresa McManus.
Okay. Hello, Ms. McManus.
All right. Teresa McManus, Whitehall. They said it better than me, they have statistics. I'm an outsider, I came here because we're rural. I like the ruralness. Zillow, $6 billion home flipping business was a disaster, now a cooling housing market could foil its comeback plan. That's Fortune magazine. Let me go on. Buyer's demand has softened. Market Watch recently reported pending home sales fell for the last, for the sixth straight month in April. Goes on and on. They don't expect it to come back for another three to four years. All right. Business Insider, sign of housing market collapse is demanding on the public to understand what is happening. Fortune magazine, housing market prices are going down. All right, let's get to some good ones. Home prices during recession, what it means for demand and what it means for mortgage rating. That was Reuters. So this is all. Housing affordability collapses at fastest rate in 20 years. Hmm. We talked about speculation. Let's look at gas prices. Let's look at food prices. Let's look at the fact that our high school's not accredited. Let's look at the fact that we have trash cans in the high school to collect water, that we have teachers who complain it's too hot, it's too cold, the kids are there. Our high school is not equipped. Our school is not equipped, we're not accredited. I wouldn't bring my kids here or my grandchildren. It's all speculation. But I do have a question, Mr. Jordan. How much of that land has timber on it? How much is he going to make on that timber? Is it going to pay his $6,000 a month for the timber he's going to get off our land so that he's really not paying for anything? You guys have an opportunity to listen for once in your life to your constituents. I've brought people who had never heard about this, who didn't know about it. You have not reached your constituents. They do not know that this is happening. How dare you sell off the rights of the Buckingham people by doing this? Don't be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you, ma'am. So that concludes, okay.
Chairman, I was here when the meeting started. The paper could take it up.
You'd have to sign up in advance, sir. Okay, so, board members, any comment or any questions?
You've got to close the public hearing first.
And the public hearing is closed.
Chairman.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Brian.
I've been on the board 11 years, and we've done nothing with that property. You know, I've heard it said that we don't want people from New York, New Jersey in our area. Mr. Kapaczynski, you got to leave. Okay?
I'm providing.
Okay. The way I look, you know, money is green. If we're going to take that avenue, then we should say, welcome to Buckingham, but we're going to vet from where you're from. I've lived here for 22 years. I'm still an outsider. I wasn't born and raised here. I didn't, I went to school one year here, but I'm still considered an outsider here. I know that we want rural Buckingham. I've heard that said. The way I look at it, a subdivision impacts less than a farm. If somebody puts a farm up for sale and they subdivide it into three-acre lots, and the land's big enough, then you've got all those homes, and they're probably not up to VDOT standards, the roads. This is a chance for us looking forward, a $15 million tax base. When I first came on the board, we had, it was probably $30 million budget. I looked the other day in the paper and laughed that we had a $1 million budget in Buckingham many years ago. Now we're up to, Carl, nearly $60 million. People have said that, you know, the price of things are going up, and that is true. We just recently took over the rescue squad, and that costs money. So how do we bring in revenue? In the 11 years I've been here, there have been no nibbles on that land. None. Zero. Zilch. Nobody wants to develop it until now. So we have somebody that's going to develop it. It's going to be up to VDOT standards. He's guaranteeing a tax base for us. You know, that's speculation. You know, you laugh, sir. You know, I...
It is all speculation.
It is. I mean, absolutely, but...
And nobody wants it.
Well, that's your opinion, ma'am.
You all had your turn.
You had your...
It's our chance to consider this, please.
You know, I'm looking forward. 10 years from now, hopefully, this is going to be a good thing for the county. You know, nobody knows that until you try. And if we don't try to do something, then we're going to be a sleepy community, and your taxes are going to steadily go up. And then what are you going to do? You're going to come to this building, and you're going to raise cane, because we raised taxes five cents, 10 cents, and it's going to steadily go up. So you task us to bring money into the county, and we're trying. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Supervisor Brian.
Mr. Chairman.
You have some supervisor Matthews?
Mr. Chairman, yes.
Yes, sir.
I do. I heard a lot of things said tonight that are not totally true. And first thing is, three years ago, at the onset of the pandemic, this board saw fit to do a tax reduction of three cents on your real estate and personal property. Now, that don't sound like a lot of money, but what would three cents equate out to, Mr. Carter?
$150,000.
$150,000 that we saved the county during a pandemic. I would dare say I don't know of any other county or locality in the state of Virginia or the United States that has accomplished that. I kept hearing about we had revenue problems in this county. We do not have revenue problems in this county since I've been on the board and even before that, and we don't have revenue problems now. Now, this gentleman that is looking at purchasing this piece of property is constructing a road that's going to cost $185,000, and he's going to turn that over to the county. The engineering cost, which he has to adhere to from the advice of this board of building these homes, and that's the other misconception. All I heard was about townhomes. There are also going to be single-family dwellings that are going to outnumber the townhomes. Now, I owned a business here in Buckingham for 25 years and was pretty successful. But it's people like that, the small businesses that are going to piggyback on this thing. There are going to be more people definitely in the county. But that's not, I mean, that's helping the businesses that are here already. It's not just helping the gentleman that's going to purchase this property and the businesses that he's going, that he's talking about putting in here. It's not just about homes and rooftops. He's also going to put in, you know, some type of retail and small industrial-type stuff. This is not just a heavy industrial park that we're developing. The other thing is, the infrastructure that's going, that's going to happen in this subdivision is about $2.2 million. The county's not paying that. Who do you think's paying for that? And the estimated whole revenue project is going to be about $35 million after it's totally built out. So, I mean, I don't know about your opinion about business, about and what happens to businesses, but that seems like a pretty dead-on good deal for Buckingham County. It does to me. And you shake your head, or, no, that's not right. Well, you're talking about adding maybe 150 households to Buckingham County. Our school division is down, almost 150 students in Buckingham County. And yet, yes, they're not accredited. You're right. But that's not a job of the Board of Supervisors. We need to hire people and elect people on these other boards that are willing to pay the price and do the right thing. Pardon me?
All right, let's please not, this is not interact time.
That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Or, I'll say this very briefly. I've interacted and heard from a large number of people inside my district and outside of my district, and obviously, there could be many uses for the land. I do think that when the county has so much control like we do over this project, when the developer has compromised on several changes that I heard from and my fellow supervisors heard from, and he's compromised, and we, I have no problem with people who follow the law and are good people to come into this county. I don't care where you're from, as long as you're helping contribute, as long as you're lawfully abiding. And I think that if done correctly, and there are a myriad of stop-gap measures and in the contract, in the agreement, that have to be checked, and it's going to be done in phases. It's not going to all happen at one time. And the land, frankly, hadn't done much for the county. I mean, the majority of it, I'll say. And y'all are right, the, you know, the price of doing business is going up and up and up, and I think it's, I think it's important to diversify our income as well, instead of leaning so heavily on the real estate tax base. The last thing any supervisor right now wants to do is go up on your taxes, because inflation is at 8.5%. Gasoline is going up. So it's an effort to diversify our income without going up on y'all's taxes. As somebody said on the board, you know, it costs roughly $2 million a year to run our newly-created EMS and emergency management department, and you can't do it for free. So I'm in favor of the project. I think it would contribute to the county, to the tax base as well, and to the lifestyle of the county. And there are several, again, there are several components in the contract where it'll be done right. Any other supervisor have a comment or question, anything? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move forward with the sale of the county property as outlined in the contract.
Motion made by Supervisor Brian, seconded by Supervisor Matthews, to execute the sale per the contract and per the public hearing notification, I'll say. Any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor, please record your votes. Aye. Those opposed, no.
It's the same regarding sign.
Oh.
One you're voting on is regarding the sign.
Okay.
That's the next thing.
Can we, okay.
Need to replace it first.
So we cleared the vote, Ms. Land?
Right on my screen, so I'm not sure.
There you go.
There you go. There you go.
So if we'll, Supervisor Matthews, if you could second that, if you'd like. Okay, motion by Supervisor Brian, seconded by Supervisor Matthews. As stated, all in favor, please record your votes. Aye. Those opposed, no. Okay, the carries three, I'm sorry, four to three. So motion carries. Okay. Our next item is item L2. We have a second public hearing with regards to amending the zoning ordinance regarding sign placement for public hearings. Ms. Edmiston, if you could address that before we open the hearing, please.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'll go back to the May Board of Supervisors meeting and just point out that the Planning Commission had been asked to consider an amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding the sign placement for public hearings. The amendment would still require signs to be posted, but in the event that signs are not placed, this noncompliance would not invalidate the application or ultimate actions taken by the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors. And of course, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on it. I brought that to you last month, and they voted unanimously to recommend this amendment to the zoning ordinance. So this is what the hearing tonight is in regard to.
Thank you, Ms. Edmiston. Ms. Land, did we have anyone to sign up?
No one signed up to speak.
All right, so I'll open and close the public hearing. So what is your pleasure on item L2 with regards to amending? Did you all already make those motions on the board?
I'll make that motion again.
Okay.
Supervisor Matthews.
I'll second it again.
Motion is made by Supervisor Brian, seconded by Supervisor Matthews, to approve the amendment. All in favor, please record...
My screen was messed up again, Jones. Go back to document.
Hold on one second. All in favor, please record your votes. Aye. Those opposed, no. Of all the, and it passes seven to zero. Thank you. One thing I'd like to add to the previous L1 is that there will be a rezoning process, so there will be another set of opportunities for public hearings before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors with regards to rezoning said property to Village Center One. And I'm sorry that the folks left silly. I could hear that. Okay. Zoning Matters, M1 Case Introduction 21-SUP298. Ms. Edmiston.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This case is 21-SUP298. The landowner, landowners are Ike and Rebecca Yoder. They're located at 7041 Crump Town Road, Farmville, Virginia 23901. Mr. Ike Yoder is the applicant. Tax map is 194 parcel 15. It contains approximately 122.58 acres, and it's located in the Curbsville Magisterial District. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a sawmill, and the applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. As mentioned, this property is located at 7041 Crump Town Road, Farmville, Virginia 23901, in the Curbsville Magisterial District. This property is currently Zoned A1, and the zoning ordinance does not permit a commercial sawmill as a permitted by right use in an agricultural A1 district. However, within this district, a commercial sawmill may be permitted by the Board of Supervisors by special use permit, following a recommendation by the Planning Commission in accordance with this ordinance in the Code of Virginia. The Planning Commission may recommend, and the board may impose conditions to ensure protection of the district if the SUP is approved. This case came to the attention of the zoning administrator by way of a complaint. After investigation and meeting with the landowner, it was discovered that a large area of land had been disturbed, and DEQ approval and permitting and erosion and sediment control and land disturbance permit would be necessary. DEQ and county officials have conducted a site visit on September 24, 2021, and the communication is included in this packet. Mr. Yoder has contracted a civil engineer and is working to mitigate issues immediately. Mr. Yoder wishes to stay in compliance with all federal, state, and local permitting. Again, this case was introduced to the Planning Commission on November 22, 2021, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this on December 27, 2021. At this time, the Planning Commission requested more information from Mr. Yoder regarding additional traffic impacts, DEQ notice of violation, and necessary actions moving forward for traffic, safety, and noise. A written request was received from Mr. Yoder to suspend consideration of his application until further notice. A letter of request and a formal response detailing the requested additional information was received May 2, 2022. Mr. Yoder requested to unsuspend case 21-SUP298 and continue consideration. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to present this case to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Yoder is here this evening to address questions or concerns.
Does any supervisor have any question for Mr. Yoder?
I just got one thing I want to say.
Yes, Sir Supervisor Davis.
Not for Mr. Yoder, but when our last meeting, some citizens spoke up that, like, we were trying to make it harder on the Amish community than we were anybody else, and I just want to know that we just wanted all the businesses in the county to conform to the same laws. VDOT says what the roads got to be, not the Board of Supervisors. So I just, I wanted that on the record, that we're not making it harder on anybody else, or less hard on a county resident. We just want everybody to have to go by the same set of rules. So that's all I got to say about that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'll just note that I've talked extensively with staff, and I'd like for the alleged offenses communicated by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality straightened out first in their entirety before we consider this. So I am going to be voting no.
Have all those conditions been taken care of, that were addressed in the overview? I mean, with DEQ and EPA?
So in DEQ currently, if you were able to read the additional documents provided by Maxine Associates, Chip Coleman is the engineer that Mr. Yoder has a contract with currently. The stream bank mitigation issues, where there were 10 inches of sediment into the creek there, those mitigation efforts have been resolved, and there's a copy of the email in that report. The other mitigation efforts for the land disturbance are that Mr. Yoder, and if he's here, Mr. Yoder, please correct me if I'm leaving any details out, but he has made mitigation efforts regarding silt fence, temporary basins, sowing temporary and permanent seedings. To this point, Mr. Coleman did phone me last week, because he was not able to attend the meeting tonight, and make the comment that mitigation efforts to this point have been received, reports written to DEQ, DEQ responded, and Maxine Associates is formulating an additional response. The response will be based upon whether or not Mr. Yoder would be possibly approved for a special use permit ultimately. If they were, if he is, then the development plan for a commercial sawmill is much different. Should his permit be denied, he would then be presenting development plans for agriculture to DEQ. So he has stabilized the area thus far.
That satisfy you, Mr.?
And he's compliant with DEQ.
That does not?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, DEQ, yeah, I know they said they were satisfied, but VDOT, I still see where they're not.
We don't have anything further from VDOT at this point. When the land disturbance activities came into place, they far exceeded what the land use permit had been applied for with VDOT. So Chip... So, Chip Coleman, as engineer, will be orchestrating the next moves for the state and federal permitting for Mr. Yoder. So, the land disturbance activities that took place, you know, near the edge of the road, they are all within that DEQ development report, so that would be something that Mr. Coleman would, uh, reach out to VDOT to, um, finalize that process.
That answer your question Supervisor Allen?
I think we need to wait till we are here from VDOT.
VDOT still ain't satisfied, according to that.
Vice Chairman Chambers, you?
No, I just say I think we should wait till we hear from VDOT, I'm not gonna go yesterday night on it, I'm gonna go, no, if it's on.
Have anything to say, Mr. Yoder, have they addressed those issues? Are they moving forward with your permitting for the driveway?
Could you come up to the mic if you're willing, Mr. Yoder, so we can capture your comments, please?
How are you doing this evening?
Good, and you, sir?
Good, so the question is, there seems to be some, just, VDOT hasn't signed off on your driveway permit, is, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's, it's checked no right here.
Okay.
It says the land permit has been done, but they haven't, they still gotta perform a, uh...
They notified you, or you hadn't talked to anybody with them, has Chip talked to anybody?
So, when the, when the traffic impact analysis determination was, um, first completed for Mr. Yoder, by, I think, Mr. Edwards did this one, it state that more work would need to be done. Mr. Yoder did apply for a land use permit. What stopped the development of that driveway was actually the land disturbance activities, because at that point, because he, Mr. Yoder, um, because of the activities that took place, um, encompassing ten to fifteen acres for disturbance, an additional fifteen to twenty acres was needed for the stabilization. That driveway is included for areas that needed to be stabilized before, you know, another big piece of equipment can get in there and do anything. So, the commercial entrance, at this point, cannot go further, because it... The development plan that needs to be passed to DEQ by Mr. Yoder and his engineers at Maxine Associates will include the final development of his VDOT entrance. But, once again, it comes back to, he has mitigated, he can no longer go forward with development, whether it be for the driveway entrance or for the construction of his sawmill, because this process of a special use permit is what is going to dictate what type of plan he ultimately submits to DEQ. If he were to be approved, the ultimate plan would be for the construction of the sawmill and the development of the site fully for commercial purposes, and that would include his VDOT entrance. If sho, if something should happen through this process and Mr. Yoder is not approved, then his development plan would be for that VDOT entrance, it would be part of agriculture.
Supervisor Matthews, did you?
Well, I just, I think, just in layman's terms, if we approve this, or set to, set to, set to hearing, then he can move forward showing that we can, that we're willing to wait till the permit gets approved once that actually happens, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, Sir Supervisor Matthews, so Ms. Edmundston, so, is, so VDOT is waiting on the Board of Supervisors to approve the project?
When, per a conversation with VDOT, once the land disturbing activities exceeded what was actually stated for the VDOT permit for the entrance, he cannot go forward at this time. So VDOT needs to be, but it's not hinging on the Board of Supervisors. I mean, a decision ultimately will determine whether or not Mr. Yoder will be able to move forward with commercial purposes at his property, or if he will have, if he's declined, then the remainder of the stabilization and all the efforts there will go back to agriculture. And then VDOT will be pulled in to determine if, that he will even need an entrance as has been proposed.
Okay, I think I understand.
This is all part of what would be encompassed in the site plan if we required one prior with an engineer. We would then know what was on the table.
Sure. Any other questions or concerns?
Was the stream cleaned up?
Yes, sir, there's an email in those additional docs from Carol Witt with DEQ where she is satisfied with the mitigation efforts in the stream bank. He was done by Mr. Yoder, um, buckets and shovels, am I correct? And that was, um, also confirmed by Lynn Hill, our, um, erosion and sediment.
And again, tonight, just a reminder, we're just setting a public hearing, we're not approving anything, but still, just for context for everybody. So, is there any action?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing.
Alright, the motion has been made by Supervisor Davis, seconded by Supervisor Matthews for a July eleventh, six P M, public hearing for this case. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your votes, aye, those opposed, no.
Can you vote yes for me? My computer is frozen.
Maybe Mr. Schumaker could come look at the voting board.
It did this and quit.
Alright, now, alright, we have you recorded as yes Supervisor Brian. Is that, does that reflect your vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it carries five to two. Um, next item is M two, introduction of case twenty-two dash SUP three oh two, uh, Ms. Edmundston.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on just a second, I think they want some clarification. We set a public hearing for July the eleventh, so Mr. Yoder needs to come back to address that, so, uh...
Okay, thank you.
Which is the July meeting, okay, yes, sir.
Thank you Supervisor Matthews.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Edmundston.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, introduction of case twenty-two SUP three zero two, land owner is Dominic Lamonte, and the applicant is Aaron Reed Lamonte. The property information is tax map ninety-three parcel twelve, it contains approximately four acres, and it's located at eighteen sixty-seven Mulberry Grove Road, Buckingham, in the Mayesville Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A one. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast with six dry campsites. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request. This case was introduced to the Planning Commission on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and a public hearing was held May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to present this case to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Uh, would it be the wishes of the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing on July sixth?
I make a motion that we move it to July sixth, public hearing.
July the sixth, July the eleventh?
July eleven.
July eleven.
Motion has been made by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Matthews to approve the, entered, to, uh, to set the public hearing, excuse me, for SUP three oh two. Any questions or concerns before we vote? July eleven. All in fa, all in favor, please record your vote, aye, those opposed, no. Supervisor?
Yes.
Brian votes aye, can that be, thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. The next item is M three, introduction of case twenty-two dash SUP three zero three, Ms. Edmundston.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the owner and applicants this evening are Roy and Janice Turner at four twenty-nine Maple Top Lane, Buckingham. There are, I believe, four tax maps included, those are thirty-four thirty-four with nine point nine seven six acres, thirty-four thirty-three, seventy point three acres, thirty-four thirty-four A, a little over ten acres, and thirty-four thirty-four B, seven point two eight acres. These are all located in close proximity right at four twenty-nine Maple Top Lane, Buckingham in the James River Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A one, and the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast, campsites, and event center. Events to include but not limited to weddings, reunions, festivals, concerts, crafting, arts, celebrations of life with up to fifteen hundred attendees. The applicants are asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. This case was introduced to the Planning Commission April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and a public hearing was held May twenty-third. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to present this case to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Would it be the wishes of the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing on July?
Thank you, Ms. Edmundston, so the motion is made by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Davis to hold a six P M, uh, hearing on July the eleventh with regards to this case Supervisor Brian?
It gave me six, we got two more before that, right?
Well, after the, yes, yes, sir, thank you. Supervisor Brian, did you have a question?
Yes, how many campsites are we talking about?
Um, on theirs, let me go back.
Cause I didn't see it on theirs.
Many other parcels other than six, so I would say, um, up to six on each. Are Roy and Janice with me this evening? Yes, they are, and I don't want to speak for them, um, it is dry camping. And I think Roy and I had a conversation initially, was it six on each parcel?
Okay.
I got a question too.
Yes, sir Supervisor Matthews.
Have y'all done any type of study or anything that would lead you to believe that you're gonna need the camping sites? I'm just curious.
And if, uh, but you all could, please answer from the podium so we can capture your...
Were you just thinking about that you're gonna need them? What, what's determining you thinking that you need a campground up there? Just curious.
Arch, um... Talking to people.
Like we said about the, uh, industrial park, you never know to your track.
I guess my question is, there's no place that I know of in Buckingham to dump, uh, recreational vehicle?
Have a septic system on the property.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Right now, we're applying for dry camping.
Dry campsites.
Okay, okay.
And you are applying for an Airbnb, so is there a structure there that you're gonna rent other than the campsites, is that how this is?
Yes.
Okay, and what is that, your home, or?
No, it is a, um, buggy top, um...
Building?
Building, yes.
One room, or is it multiple? Water and sewer into that facility?
Water, yeah, and sewage, yes.
Concrete pad, or sitting on a dirt floor?
On piers.
Any other questions before we vote?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor, please record your vote, aye, those opposed, no. And we set the public hearing, uh, six to zero, one abstention from Supervisor Allen. Moving on to, uh, item N on our agenda, department agency reports and items for consideration. N one is solid waste recycling, uh, Reese Hammer, Replenish, appearing virtually regarding possibly, uh, regarding a possible new recycling, uh, program, so, Mr. Carter, did you want to, okay?
Yes, very good presentation.
So thank you for being here, Mr. Hammer.
Hello, everyone, can you hear us?
Jamie.
Yes, please continue.
Um, I also brought my colleague Clark Dennison, Dennison here, uh, as well.
Everyone.
Hello.
Thanks for being here, let's hear your presentation.
Yeah, hi, everyone, uh, we are excited, the opportunity to help your community recycle more materials. Um, we engage Buckingham County to help offer access to markets for your recyclable commodities, help reduce the cost of your current program, um, and actually help you recycle more, more materials. That means including, um, you know, plastics and other materials that you may not be recycling today. Uh, we are funded by brands like PepsiCo, and Walmart, and Driscoll's, and others to help communities keep more materials from going to landfill. Um, we, we exist to help communities, um, and our brand partners close the loop on your materials and build a more circular economy. Uh, with that goal in mind, we've actually developed a circular cohort, cohort with twelve other counties and cities to help, uh, guide them to build a circular, build circularity into their recycling program, uh, and we have invited Buckingham County to be a part of that. Um, well, with that, I wanna hand it off to Clark, uh, to add a few more points about our goal, uh, for Buckingham County's, uh, recycling program.
Thanks, everyone, uh, I'm Clark Dennison, I'm the head of product here at Replenish. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. Uh, so I'm personally responsible for designing the overall replenish experience and overseeing, um, our team of engineers who are building the technology that you'll soon have access to. Um, as a company, as Reese, Reese, uh, referred to, you know, we exist because ninety-four percent of Americans have access to recycling, yet less than twenty-five percent of the products we use get recycled. And so we're here to fix that. Um, in fact, we actually estimate that about one million dollars worth of commodity value is burned or buried in a landfill for every twenty-five thousand people in our country. So, we see this as a huge economic opportunity for your community, um, and we wanna kind of shift that burden from taxpayers and the municipalities over to the brands who are our customers. So we're this new model that, you know, will hopefully relieve that burden, um, you know, from your, from your township. Um, our goal of this program is to uplift communities like yours through the monetization of recyclable materials and products, and we wanna bring transparency and trust to this product, to this, uh, entire process. So whereas traditional recycling, we feel like is a very much of a black box, we don't know where it ends up, we are using technology to, uh, you know, bring light to that darkness and really show where those materials go, and hopefully connect them back to the brands, as Reese mentioned, who are our customers. Um, so, you know, overall, we're just very excited to have Buckingham County, you know, join us on our mission to end landfills, and we look forward to answering any questions.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here virtually, uh, any supervisor have a question or, um, comment on this exciting opportunity?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Yes, Sir Supervisor Matthews.
Uh, Mr. Brian and I both went through their, uh, these guys did a little promotion, actually Reese did, uh, enlightening us on some of the things that the county could, could do, and, uh, how we could go about doing it with, uh, these one yard square cubicle bags that, uh, would be used for clear plastics, it would be used for cardboard, it could be used for, uh, certain types of metal, aluminum cans and steel cans. And over the course of the last six years since I've been on the board, or eight years since I've been on the board, uh, we've had numerous citizens ask us about recycling, and this is the way that we don't have to invest a lot of, uh, taxpayer money into something like that, and to get it off the ground and going, and we could actually put, they're welcome, welcoming us to put them at any of our sites, and they're kind of putting the bill on it. It's gonna be some expense to us, uh, as far as a labor situation, uh, but it's not gonna be something that I don't think, I think the benefits are gonna outweigh the negatives as far as this is concerned monetarily, so, uh, that's just my, my take on it, and I think that, uh, it's gonna satisfy a lot of questions that our, our constituents have on recycling. So, you know, we have a, we have a, uh, dump site in every district but District Four, and, uh, you know, I, I see these things increasing, I'm very proud of what we did, that was a one-time, uh, expense that we did with the dump sites, with putting the gates and being able to get people, our citizens in and out, and, uh, not taking a lot of trash from other counties. So, uh, I just think it's a, a good thing all the way around, we're talking in terms of maybe bringing, uh, the school division on board and trying to help, uh, increase our tonnage. The more we do, the more we're gonna make, so that's gonna make it, uh, economically favorable for the county. So, uh, these guys did a great job on their presentation, and I'm sure they would be willing to show it to the whole board if they, if you, if you'd like, but, uh, I think Mr. Brian's on board, just like I am. So, anyway, that's kind of what it is in my shield, so.
Supervisor Matthews and Supervisor Brian serve on the recycling committee, so, um, it's been vetted by committee. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Sir Supervisor Brian.
Uh, Reese, you still with us?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we, you know, we, we talked about eight things, wasn't it, to recycle? Number one, plastic, the, I guess it's number two, plastic, um, we did touch on glass. Unfortunately, uh, I guess we're both aware that nobody is accepting glass in our area right now. Uh, there's no market for it, that's correct?
There, there is a market for it, unfortunately, it is, uh, too far to haul it economically, um, and so we're gonna hold off on, uh, accepting glass at this time, but we, what we do with, in our community is we go in, and then we try to get a brand partner to come and help supplement that recovery of those materials. So, uh, we will be trying to add more materials over time, but we're gonna launch, um, a plan on launching without glass, um, until we work on the economics so we can then, you know, recover those materials for the community.
Okay, thank you, Reese.
What would our next steps be, Mr. Carter, in pursuing this opportunity?
Um, if you decide you wanna pursue it, you can give me and the county attorney...
If you decide you want to pursue it, you can give me and the county attorney permission to seek an agreement with them and bring those documents back to you. And I'll bring another point, Donnie touched on it, Reese mentioned it, you know, they're also letting us do this in a phased approach. So, we don't have to take in everything at one time. We can start off small and then work our way up to getting all the recyclables. So, we can help, you know, educate the community first before people start mixing canes and stuff in the wrong containers.
Right, okay.
So, many thanks to Supervisor Matthews and Brian who are on that committee and the staff for looking into this. This seems to be something that the county would benefit from. So, the motion would be to authorize county administrator and county attorney to move forward with creating a contract for said project, is that correct, Mr. Carter? Okay, motion has been made by Supervisor Matthews, seconded by Supervisor Brian to give permission to the county staff, county attorney and county administrator to pursue this by way of a contract. Any questions?
I'm locked up again, Jamie.
If you can, but now my screen has gone blue, okay. If you, we need to second it. Yeah, it has been seconded, but it hadn't come up.
Who seconded?
Supervisor Brian did.
Can you check me?
Okay, the motion.
Okay, there it is.
All right, those in favor will record your votes, aye, those opposed, no. Okay, and that is, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here and to the committee and the staff, okay.
Thank you very much.
Item N two, consider allowing county attorney and county administrator to continue working on commitment for Firefly for high-speed internet. So, you want to address that, Mr. Carter?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, as you all know, we committed, and Gary and Galen spoke of it earlier, we committed the 1.5 million from our American Rescue Recovery Act funds to Firefly to finish getting high-speed internet throughout the county. Firefly is not only using these funds committed from us, but they also receive funds from the state in the form of VADI grant. Because of the size of the project, how it affects so many localities, Firefly applied for VADI funds through a regional approach and that agency that was the conduit for this was the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, or TJPD for short. The actual primary applicant of the VADI grant is the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission with Firefly being the co-applicant. This type of agreement is being presented to other remaining 12 localities that Firefly serves with VADI funds. It's the goal of the TJPD to have all these agreements executed in the month of June. The main information in this agreement is the county is still providing the 1.5 million in management funds for the project to continue in our area with no additional costs. The TJPD will be the fiscal agent and overall project manager. TJPD will also be required to keep and maintain all records and compliance with any future orders for the project. And I'm asking you tonight to approve this resolution or agreement with TJPD so that we can move forward with this project. We're looking at some final language now, so we may have some revision we need to make to this agreement. And that's dealing with the, how you account for the cost. Some of you are familiar with that AIA document that shows you a percent of supplies on hand versus a percent of suppliers that they purchase in the agreement of percent of completion. So, we're trying to get that stuff hammered out, but we need this resolution approved so that we can move forward with that project and that Firefly can move forward with their funds. I don't know if Gary and Galen have anything they need to add or?
Waiting for a check maybe.
Real briefly, we have a agreement in the main contract we have with TJPD that provides some of that input with every, every month of billing. We're gonna be building across all 13 counties. So, every month, we're gonna have a bill going to TJPD who they'll then submit to the state. And with that, we'll provide how many miles we've built, how many, what stage the constructions in. So, we just need to break it out, we hadn't done that by county, Buckingham asked for that. So, Buckingham will get that so that we can get the contract because we need all 13 counties to sign before the state will sign. When we started this, they said, we need to know your status is part of the process of signing. We gave them all the resolutions and they said, okay, well, now we want an actual contract. So, we need this contract. It doesn't commit you to anything different, doesn't commit us to anything different. It's just getting the language in there so that, we had planned to provide the information to the planning district to show what was built. That's part of what we'll be submitting and requesting reimbursement. So, it makes sense that we can do that at the county level, we just need to get the language in the contract, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any questions? We have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Brian, seconded by Supervisor Allen, to move forward with this agreement. Working there too, I should say. So, any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your votes, aye, those opposed, no. And that motion carries seven to zero, thank you. Our next item is N three, consider tires on private property policy, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, at last month's meeting, I suggested that staff work on an illegal tire storage policy and bring it back to you this month for approval. I've attached a policy on the following pages with the Virginia State Code that applies. I've put some asterisks beside certain parts of the code to highlight exemptions that do apply because I was not aware that, and I got a phone call between last month and now, that some farmers have tires on their property to keep their hay off the ground. So, they will make sure to let me know that, you know, they have a legitimate reason for having tires on their property sometimes. The code that applies to this policy is Section 10 dot 1 dash 1418 dot 2, improper disposal of tires. The exemption penalty, exemption penalty. In summary, this statute says it is illegal to have more than 100 tires on your property. It's a misdemeanor to have more than 100 tires on your property, it's a felony to have more than 500 tires on your property. And exceptions for convenience centers, salvage yards, bona fide uses related to growing, harvesting or processing agricultural forest products. So, those are those exemptions that help the farmers out for why they need the tires on their properties. This policy basically falls into two categories, a misdemeanor and a felony depending on the number of tires on the property. But the process is still the same for both conditions. Once a complaint is received, the following steps should be taken with assistance of law enforcement. Staff will contact the landowner in writing and advise there's a violation. We will request the landowner to contact the county. If contacted, we'll develop a remediation plan on when, where and how the tires will be disposed. County staff will follow up to make sure the plan of action is being followed and is agreed to in step number three. If the landowner does not contact the county or will not remedy the violation, law enforcement will be contacted and issue a warrant. If more than 100 tires but less than 500 tires, a misdemeanor warrant will be obtained. If more than 500 tires, then a felony warrant will be obtained. So, I attached the state code. It's the page that says two oh three, you can see those with the asterisks beside them saying salvage yards or exempt. As using this section, terms store and otherwise place shall not be construed as meaning the holding of fields and 500 tires for bona fide uses related to growing, harvesting or processing of agricultural products or forest products. And this should not apply to the storage of less than 1,500 tires in a container or in a convenience center or a salvage yard. And it should not apply to recycling centers or processing, using, manufacturing of a new product as long as the tires are not being speculative accumulated. So, if you adopt this tonight, this will become a tire policy effective immediately. I think some of you have gotten some complaints about certain locations in the county to have an excess of probably more than 1,000 tires. So, this gives us some staff some meat to go out and start enforcing those rules.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter, any questions before we entertain motions, gentlemen?
What do you consider a convenience center? I didn't see you having like a Anderson tile or Fosters that gonna have much tile on their back.
No, convenience center would be something like our recycling centers, if we were into rubber, I guess, rubber recycling, that we had a convenience center.
I mean, a tile place like that, are they on the exception?
They are no exception, yes, sir.
But I mean, it's not written, or?
So, Supervisor Allen, you'll see that in the packet under the Virginia Code. It's right after the staff documentation and it defines convenience center right there as well, sir.
Defines a convenience?
It does, yes, sir. Per the Code of Virginia.
The first one, A.
It is.
How did you come up with the number 100?
That's in the code, so if you look at that code section, it's directed from that code. That's on section, on page, let's see.
Frank, it's on the second page, under B.
Yes, sir, section B is 100 tires.
And then the 500 is under section E, well, C, excuse me, yeah, C. Does that answer you all's questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, I just don't like that felony language in there, but the landowner has the opportunity to.
They'll get a letter first advising them of the violation, they have ample time to correct it.
Because they got too many tires on the place, but.
Hopefully, they'd clean it up. Nailed with a felony.
I wouldn't know why a landowner would have 500 tires.
And I was ready to make that point Supervisor Brian, that this will go to the landowner.
Right. So, Supervisor Matthews and Allen, does that help clarify a little bit? Okay, all right, any action? Approve the policy or? Okay, a motion has been made by Supervisor Brian, seconded by Supervisor Allen to adopt the policy. Any questions before we vote? If not, all in favor, please record your vote, aye, those opposed, no. And that is unanimous, seven to zero. Next item is N four, consider refund of building permit for Jose Lenaris for the amount of $1.16 after $20 processing fee was deducted due to change from single wide to stick-built home.
Do we have that much in treasure to pay him that much money?
Yes, sir. Is there a motion on that?
No move.
There are second, motion has been made by Supervisor Brian, seconded by Supervisor Davis to approve the refund of $1.16. Any questions? All in favor, please record your vote, aye, those opposed, no. Have all the supervisors voted? Okay, it's six to one, so $1.16 is headed to the gentleman. N five, we have some EMS updates on N five and six. So, Chief Davis is here before us to request training funds, so good afternoon, sir.
Good evening, how are you?
Well.
Good. So, I guess I'll preface this request with the fact that, you know, in conjunction with the emergency services committee, Dr. Perrin has really started to allow us to expand our scope of practice here. We're doing some advanced level EMS stuff or we're gearing up to start doing some good stuff for the community that's never really been done here prior. But as you guys know, things like that come with a cost. And tonight, we've identified some training needs for that expansion of service so that we actually, you know, are putting that money to good use and are proficient with those new skills and things. The other things that we'll need to support that program, we're using other grant funding for. However, I just don't have any other grant funding available right now for these training materials. So, I asked Mr. Carter for his permission to allow me to ask you guys to appropriate the remaining balance of this fiscal year's training reserve for those needs. In particular, Mr. Hickman's reported that there's a balance of 11,720 in that reserve and we've identified $9,985 worth of training equipment. Ventures.
So, roughly 9,000, Chief Davis, is that what you're requesting or the 11? Okay, the 11, okay. All right, is there a motion on that or questions? A motion has been made by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Brian to approve the request for training funds. Any questions? All in favor, please record your vote, aye, those opposed, no. And that carries unanimous. Mr. Davis, our next one is regards to a public thank you to Farm Bureau, item N six.
Yes, so, thank you guys for the previous item. This item is strictly just a feel-good recognition. You guys remember back in 2019 Supervisor, the late Supervisor Jones created our Amish Safety Committee. That grew and had numerous meetings from numerous agencies. COVID made us take a backseat with it for sure, but we recently kind of revamped those efforts to kind of bring them all together and finalize them. And one of the most pivotal groups that were involved in that process was Farm Bureau. And in particular, Mr. Chip Davis, who I've invited to come up with me tonight and share in this special moment. But through his guidance and connections, we were able to get in touch with a, kind of the larger office of Farm Bureau, I suppose, and some staff there that have a knack for, you know, creation of digital materials and things like that. So, with that said, I brought an example of some of their creation, but I also wanted to give him a moment to kind of explain, you know, why they felt led to jump into this comprehensive share of the road campaign beyond Amish horse and buggy safety. You know, all of our slow movers, your farm traffic, Amish horse and buggy, and even we included runners and joggers on that. Oh, and while I've got the floor on this, the Virginia Galaxy, paper that writes stuff about Virginia governmental affairs, Mercury, Virginia Mercury, they're gonna cover this, they.
Mercury Galaxy.
It's close. Anyways, that should hit their headlines soon. But anyways, I guess just a moment for.
Yeah, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, like I said, won't belabor it, Cody did a great job of doing this. You know, Farm Bureau, that's one of our big things is safety and we have our own print shops and we've got a number of signs and things that are coming. It's gonna be like this, some of them gonna be bigger. The fire department's all gonna put them, you're gonna see them at firehouses, rescue squads everywhere, but it's kind of share the road. You know, it did come by up again, you know, with the Amish buggies and accidents we've had, but just as much stuff happens to tractors and combines and hauling wood trucks.
Are they gonna be banned out of that material or, you know, gonna be metal or?
They're gonna be out of this type of material right now. We could go to metal if we needed to, it's just kind of. Also, too, we're gonna support Cody and his efforts to get training for the fire department and other first responders and rescue squad in excavation, farm equipment excavation, I said it right. Farms, with farm accidents, what you do, because if you're involved in a fire, farm accident, it's not a. Act that, and anything else that we can come up with as far as farm safety.
And this does include joggers, right? People who run on the road and as not to get hit by a truck?
You better get you a light, dude.
No, so, and.
Can you get some lights put on Jordan Miles?
They're gonna, they made a few of these portraits, they're gonna have some landscape coming. And we also got some just 11 by 17 or typical print type roughly sized paper. Like a stack of, Brian's got those, we can put them in local businesses and really.
Just they'll be on buildings and stuff, they won't be on the road or anything.
Well, I guess we have the option to put them in on the road, they're pretty weathered. Maybe even at our county, you know. So, I think it would be pretty neat though to get.
Maybe after we adjourn, if y'all okay with that.
You'll take care of the ones that's roller skating down the road now? That's what I've seen here lately, in the middle of the highway, roller skating.
Any other questions? Or concerns, but thank you all very much. Thank you all for that collaborative initiative. Our next item is N seven, consider personnel committee recommendation provided under separate cover. There is no action needed if we agree to that. So, we're gonna continue on. Our next item on the amended agenda is item N eight EMS. Ryan Holland, with regards to the adoption of our emergency operations plan that was emailed to us and we heard from Ms. Holland during the previous meeting as well. So, is there, is there a motion for that?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. A motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Bryant to adopt the policy or the plan, I should say, the EOP. Any questions? All in favor, please record your votes, aye.
It's not.
Those.
Slow down.
Excuse me.
Make your motion again.
Okay, and it's seconded by Supervisor Bryant, okay. Are we ready to vote, Ms., okay. All right, please record your votes, aye, those opposed, no. And it carries unanimous, thank you. Next item is O, county attorney matters for Mr. Wright.
Oh, before Cody leaves, can I ask him one question?
Sure Supervisor. Uh, sure. Supervisor Davis?
Uh, just something from my thought. Cody, the grant you got from Apex, y'all bought gym equipment with that?
Yes, sir.
That gonna be open, is that gym equipment available for fire members and stuff, too?
Yes, sir.
That's the only question I had. I just wanted to make sure all EMS work.
We installed it today, tomorrow. We've got to just kind of fine tune it, but, but it's ready to work with Mr. Shoemaker on kind of the access element and.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, Supervisor Davis. Yes, sir, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Wright. All right, item P, County Administrator's Report, Mr. Carter.
I have anything tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Informational items are where there are four of those. Under Q, moving on to our other board matters, other board member matters, I'll start by calling on Supervisor Bryant.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, after eleven years of being on the board, I am stepping down after the August meeting. There's been some concern about naming people. At this time, if you wish to be considered for my seat, I will accept resumes either dropped off here at the county, or you can mail them to my address by June twenty-seventh. That gives me enough time to look at the resumes and consider some of my colleagues here, and then we'll move forward from there. I'll make my announcement at the August meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Bryant. Vice Chairman Chambers.
I got a couple things, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion during resolution, Mr. Charles White, he was a great educator, he done a lot for the county. I believe in giving people the flowers while they're living.
I agree. So, are we ready for that to, okay. So if you'll, okay, and there's a second to that, gentlemen? All right, a motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Allen, to honor via a resolution Charles, Mr. Charles White Senior. Any questions? All in favor, please record your votes. Aye. Those opposed, no. All the supervisors voted?
And one didn't vote.
All right, and that is seven to zero. Yes, sir, Vice Chairman Chambers.
I remember Ms. Colby the day, we got a pry with the door on the social service building, a couple people got trapped on that door. What had happened, I think it pushed them in bad. They still not let to go, go back too fast and catch people feeding that one woman fell last week. I think we need to replace that door. We came to the conclusion, think a new door would be best thing.
Let Daniel know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't even make a motion to do that door.
No.
Okay.
Also, can we get him to look?
What Joe was talking about?
Yeah, what Ms. Gooden was talking about, the handicap entrance. Maybe we can do that in-house.
Yeah, uh-huh. The handicap ramp.
Yeah.
Yeah, right out here. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
We honored the basketball team today.
Yes.
Yes.
How about the baseball team?
Yeah, our baseball team.
Made it to the final four.
Yeah, I mean, the first time ever.
They deserve the recognition. I agree.
You know, which is tremendous. I'd, I'd like to see us, you know, honor our baseball team as well.
No problem with that. Good idea.
All right, let's put that in the form of a motion.
That's a motion, Mr. Bryant.
Yeah, it's a motion.
All right, motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Matthews, to honor the Buckingham County Varsity Baseball Team for their efforts and their achievements, so.
JV team going to.
All right.
Yeah, but there's no.
All in favor, please record your votes. Aye. Those opposed, no. And we'll do that next month. Okay? Motion carries. And I have two.
They want to hold you to state.
Okay, and I have two quick items. I'd like for us to consider adopting a resolution in memoriam honoring Linda Baber Anderson. She is a resident of my district, and she was married to Dr. Anderson, who many of you know, so.
No problem.
Motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Allen. To that effect, all in favor, please record your votes. Aye. Those opposed, no. Okay, thank you. And then lastly, many of you knew Bonnie Lou Wood. She worked in the cafeteria. She's now in District Two. She was in my district, and she passed away recently. If we could please have a resolution in memoriam for her, if you don't mind.
Got to clear that thing in.
Oh. Bonnie Lou Wood.
I was just. Mole La Suce, that's the, yeah.
And invite, and maybe we could invite the family?
Okay.
Mr. Carter?
I'm defending.
All right, here we go. So is there, all right, so a motion made by Supervisor Matthews, seconded by Supervisor Davis, to adopt the resolution. Okay, all in, all in favor, please record your votes. Aye. Those opposed, no. Can you vote, Vice Chairman?
I just raised my hand, yes.
Supervisor Matthews?
You voted.
Yours voted.
Yeah, you worked.
Matthews ain't voting. There you go.
All right, seven to zero. Any other board matters before we go into closed session, gentlemen? Uh, okay. Our next item is item S, executive closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive closed session per the Code of Virginia two point two dash three seven one one dot eight dot one, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion made by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Allen, to enter into closed session. Please record your votes. Aye. Those opposed, no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. I, I can't hear. I, I can't hear. I, I can't hear.